If we could get everybody to take their seats so we can get this meeting started, we'd appreciate it. Turn around, yes, thank you.
Who said that? You can't shut it down.
I can do shit.
Well, there are plenty of people that Pete says there are a lot of people here about not for it. So, I don't... Listen, it's not our discussion. That's not our discussion. That's the media audience's discussion. Right. Well, no, yeah, I guess we can get up and talk when we have to talk about the court.
If everybody could please take their seats. Alright. We can get everybody's attention so we can get the meeting started, we'd appreciate it. Alright, thank you very much. If you'd please call the roll.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman. Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Awesome, okay. What we'd like to do, want to welcome everybody to the town council meeting. We also'd like to pay respects to our military veterans. So, if we could please stand as the Boy Scout Troop 160 presents the colors and leads the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing and Madison Sullivan honors us as they perform the National Anthem after the color guard. So...
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Alright, we have some special label pins, American flag pins, to share with our veterans. I'd like to ask the scouts to help give out the pins while we take a brief but required detour from our veterans' recognition to take care of the one piece of necessary timely town business. We need to select the next vice mayor and we will resume the veterans' recognition. So, next vice mayor, I believe, is Gary Jablonsky. Do I need a motion in a second for that?
I make a motion.
Awesome. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Okay.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome. So... At this time, we'd like to call up the Boy Scout Troop 224 to read a poem. And as they come up, I'd like to thank this Cub Scout Pack 160. I would like to ask all military veterans to stand. Please introduce yourself and tell us in what branch you served and when. So, gentlemen, greatly appreciated, would love you to come up.
Michael Hanley, Lieutenant Commander, United States Navy, VF-21 fighter pilot.
You want me to say something?
When did you serve?
Vincent J. Fullata, United States Air Force. I served from 1947 to 1953. And I did my service.
Jim Albritton, United States Army, 1969, 1972, Vietnam.
Julian Warren Winston, I served in 1953 and 1955, I was, got a dishonorable discharge.
Let's let the record show that was an honorable discharge.
Bobby Parker, Corey in War, thank you.
George Kales, United States Air Force, 1957 through 63.
Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Merkel, 1981 to 2006.
Tommy Pender, US Army, Spec 4, from 1969 to 1974, stateside.
Eddie Flores, Sergeant Major, 101st, 1977 to 2011, 101st.
Roland Gendell, United States Air Force, K-9 unit. Served 62 to 66, United States Air Force.
Unlike these guys, I probably reported to them. Ed Goncalis, US Army Drill Sergeant during the Vietnam era.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Tom Good, Fire Control Tech, United States Navy, 1977 to 83.
Did we miss anybody? Did we miss anyone? Awesome, let's give everybody a great round of applause. Alright, if we could now have Troop 224, please share your Veterans Day poem with the audience.
When America had an urgent need, these brave ones raised a hand. No hesitation held them back, they were proud to take a stand. They left their friends and family, they gave up, up, they gave up normal life. To serve their country and their God, they prowled into the strife.
They fought for freedom and for peace on strange and foreign shores. Some lost new friends, some lost their lives in long and brutal wars. Other veterans, wait, other, other veterans injured or caught, supported the one too far, their country had requirements, the essential skills they brought. We salute every one of them, the noble and the brave, the ones with us here today and those who rest in a grave.
So, here's Doug. So, to our confites heroes, they, they're a cut above the West. Let's give the honor that is due to our country's very best.
So, if I could trouble to have the vets come up front so we can all come down and get a picture with all of you, we would greatly appreciate it. Oh, jeez. Alright. Need to get our meeting back in order, please? I guess somebody bring our dais back to the middle here. You gonna go move that for her?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not there yet. Eagle Scout. Alright. Need to get our meeting back to order, sorry. Thank you. If we could get Eagle Scout Project Jonathan De Pasquale to come up, please? Awesome. You can lift that, take it out of the holder if you like, whatever works for you. Oh, mic's not working for you. Tap it, see if the sound's on. Nope. He's, hold on, you got help coming. Yeah, takes a second. There it goes. Alright. Little delay.
Just hold it?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Jonathan.
You gotta talk into it, we can't hear you.
My name is Jonathan De Pasquale and I am with Troop 224 from South Huts Ranches. And I wanted to do an Eagle Scout project on bat houses. So, go to the next slide. So, I'll start with why they, why we should build a bat house. The bats naturally live here year-round. There are 13 native species, two of which are endangered. The bats help reduce mosquitoes without using pesticides. Some, these bats are good for pollinating and helping plants grow, helping spread. They naturally live in the trees here, but they can be easily preyed on. And a bat house can hold 200-plus bats. I put that a bat can eat thousands of flying insects per night. So, it's not, it might not just be, might not just be mosquitoes, but many other insects. Also, the caves are not very common for the ones that migrate down here. So, a bat house gives them somewhere to live. Also, they like to live on people's houses, like the outside, the eaves of people's houses and barns. So, a bat house will naturally draw them away from the people, their house and, okay, next. Found out some stuff about the construction of it and placement. The bat, the house needs to be 20 feet from the nearest tree branch, needs to be near a freshwater source. It would be made of exterior grade stuff, so it would last long. I found one that would have four chambers, which allowed the bats to move around for warmer, from, to warmer, colder places inside the house. The house actually is about 31 inches tall and 18 inches wide up on a pole. I put that it would be up on a steel pole, 15 feet up, so 12 feet approximately off the ground from the bottom. I put some, I found some stuff about how deep the pole should be, so about 40 inches deep is what I found recommended for this project in concrete. Then I found, for the cost of my project, it was somewhere around $500, which doesn't seem to be too much. I wanted to use my scout account for some of it and maybe a fundraiser. And then the last slide. So, I started looking at the question park and I found some places that the bats would enjoy and it would be away from the people. That would, there were some issues with maybe the bats being too close to trees and stuff, so I found that those places worked pretty well. But in general, it's all in the back of the park. Do you have any questions?
Hi, Jonathan, nice to see you again. Did you find out that how far away from their water source is? Can they be placed where they're up in the park or do they need to stay in the park?
I believe it was about half a mile is the mo, is the furthest, but, yeah. They also want to keep, be close to the water so the mother bats can go to the water without leaving their young for a long period of time. It doesn't have to be right on the water, though.
What is their number one predator would be out here, would be raccoons or something?
Right.
So, that's why you checked into the steel poles?
Right.
You wanna chime in there, Gary? You got any questions?
So, how high do they, does this home kinda have to be off the ground?
The top of it would be 15 feet off the ground and it's like three feet tall, so it'd be 12 to 15. Yes, we're going to paint it a dark brown shade. That makes it the right temperature for this area.
We've got an audience question, I think.
Yes, I will.
Have you thought about instead of using paint, Jonathan, that maybe you would use some kind of a stain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I do.
Because sometimes paint chips off and, you know.
I've had better luck with stain in North Carolina than I have with paint, so I would tell you stain will probably last you a little bit longer. Go ahead.
About $500?
Alright, well, let me tell you what I always do for all you Eagle Scout Project gentlemen. I donate $100 to you. So, I'm going to contribute $100 to your project and anybody else that wants to contribute or help out would be greatly appreciated, so come on up here and let me give you $100. You'll match it? Alright.
Alright, going once, twice. Mr. Polikoff, can we get you in there?
Here you go.
Astor's got a question. Astor's got a question.
The foundation's gonna do 100? Awesome, okay. So, you're well on your way. Go ahead, what?
Um, I believe so. Yes, yes.
Okay, pressure-treated lumber, do a little homework on that 'cause it has to dry out a little bit before you can stain it. Just a heads-up on that.
How are you gonna keep the animals from crawling up that wood?
The steel pole, that's right.
Steel pole will work. Any other questions? Gary, any? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Appreciate all the hard work, stick to it. And thank everyone else for contributing and pitching in, greatly appreciated. Alright, we're in public comment. You wanna read the rules, Keith?
The rules of public comment are on the agenda. Each speaker's entitled to three minutes apiece. Can only speak on items that are not on the councilmember agenda tonight. So, anything that's not on the agenda. We have two comment cards, three comment cards, maybe four. David Kozinski followed by Steve Bright Cruz, followed by Noel Hollingsworth, and last speaker is Mary Gay Chapels. We have one final one. Thank you, David.
David Kozinski, sixty-four-eleven Hollity Trail. Good evening, council. Congratulations to new members elected and congratulations to the town for significantly passing the Five-O amendments. I'm here to speak that our, I guess, Assistant Treasurer and Board Member, Francis Cordero, on November eleventh, gave birth to her son, Damian Cordero, weighing in at seven pounds, five ounces. So, the son, Damian Cordero, son of Orlando Cordero and Francis Cordero, now join Southwest Ranches. Thank you.
Steven Bright Cruz? Just a resident, that's all, that's all. You know, one of the things that we worked on for twelve years while I was here was to fix this podium and we still haven't got it right. We still, still have not got it right. So, let's just add that to the agenda of things to do if we could, you know. I just wanna take a few moments to just say some words of congratulations. First of all, I just want to really congratulate John Eastman for his willingness to get involved, to run, and to put himself out there. It's not an easy thing to do. And so, I just congratulate him on doing that and being involved. I wanna congratulate Gary. Four years, the best way to do it is to walk into it. But you've done a great job, you certainly earned it. Congratulations on four more years, I know you're gonna do an amazing job. And I wanna congratulate Bob Hartman. Bob, congratulations, it's a lot of work. I'm talking about the campaign here, it's a lot of work once you're sitting up there as well. But I know you're gonna do a great job. You've done so much for the community already and you ran a great campaign. Very honest, straightforward campaign. Well done, well done and congratulations. Being an old guy, not necessarily a wise guy, but you can take that however you want. But I did wanna say, say just a couple of things. Not that you need to hear this, Bob, 'cause you already know it. But I did wanna say a couple of things anyway. There's a few things that I think are critical when you sit in any one of those chairs up there. And number one is to always remember that you're there as a representative of the residents. And they are an amazing source and so long as, so long as we do a good job of representing their thoughts, their desires, their needs, we can never go astray. The second thing is that no matter what choice you have up there, what decision you have to make, it should always be weighed against who we are. And that is to preserve our rural lifestyle. Every decision we make should always support, defend, and further our rural lifestyle. And the last thing I would say along those lines is when you, when you walk into this room and you sit in that chair, I encourage you to never, ever have your mind made up a hundred percent. Do your research, know, know what, what, you know, you're gonna be speaking about in your position. But there's always a wealth of information, a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience out here that you should always be willing to listen to and adjust or change, however, you know, your mind or your decision on it. Because that's, that's who we are.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. The last thing I wanted to say was a congratulations to the residents of this town. They, they did an amazing job with the amendments, seeing the importance of them and how that is key to the preservation of our rural lifestyle for years to come. I firmly believe that aside from the vote that we took to form this town, that vote for the amendments was the second most important thing we've done since we've been a town. So, congratulations to the residents of this town for taking that step and preserving our rural lifestyle, thank you. Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Robert Parker.
Noel Hollingsworth, Hundred-Ninety-Ninth Avenue. That was wonderful how short he was tonight. I would like to welcome Steve to the peanut gallery. And we've kept the seat warm for him for many, many years. And so, but the, there's nothing but embers underneath it now. The bonfire we used to have underneath it for him, but is gone. And I'd like to welcome Bob into the hot seat up there. And I'm sure a lot of us will make it a lot hotter for you. But winter is coming and so you can take the heat. So, and Gary, congratulations on your hard-fought race. And glad to see you back. Thank you.
Robert. And the final speaker is Bunny Chapels.
Bobby Parker, One Forty-four Thirty-one Mustang Trail. I'm here for you because of the horse manure that keeps being dropped on Mustang... I mean Hancock and Palomino. I, I think every one of you behind that counter up there should go and look at this mist. There were four loads dropped, it was promised it was gonna be removed. It wasn't. Now, there's about twenty loads been dropped. And it's just... It, it's a very eyesore, it smells bad. And if it was next door to any one of you guys sitting up there, it would be gone by now. Thank you.
Yes, this is... Jablonsky, you've made me crazy. So, finally, they recommended a service pet. And so, this is my service pet. I'm gonna get a leash and collar for it and let it bounce around with me. And it does actually ride right on my lap. It's very quiet. I was nuts, I'm nuttier. So, he said I needed a service pet, thank you very much. I got a little one, so I don't have to lug twenty pounds. Anyway, what I wanna tell you is that I've lived out there on Dyke's Road for fifty-five-plus years, I'm really getting up there now. Vince and I are racing for the hundred mark. But I fought a light there for years. When they first put in the elementary school, I fought it. They wanted to put a light in right away, nope. Well, my daughter almost got hit several times, I've had them in my fences. They have wrecks there now about every three a week. And so, I begged and pleaded and did the best I could and they're putting it in now. I had fifty-five trucks lined up in front of my place while they drilled holes and poured these things. And I looked at it and I thought, there goes my lifestyle, down the tube. But I will fight to keep it as rural as possible. But we need the light. We need it there for the kids, we need it there for the teachers, and we need it there for just the general public because they don't pay attention to the stop signs. They run them. And the last accident they had was really bad, it rolled the van right over. One van hit another van and it was on its head. So, I just want you to know, the stop light, I mean, the, yeah, the lights are gonna be in. They put four corners in, so I'm assuming it's gonna be one of those arm-like things. Thingamabinks. So, at any rate, my rural lifestyle is deteriorating. And when you say rural lifestyle, since I was there first, I can attest to how much it's deteriorating. What I would suggest is that we look at everything carefully, that we do, and understand that some areas require some things and some areas don't. And go from there. Because I've been there long enough to watch the changes. I had a canal in front of my house and a dirt road and it ended at my house. I'm not a politician, so I have to go now.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any board reports?
Good afternoon, George Morris on the comment board. Just to touch base with you guys, we've been working very hard on going over different, the nursery ordinance and we put together a list of bullet points that we're gonna continue to review. Most of you were there the last time, so we're working hard diligently, trying to get it done as quick as possible. So, we'll continue to do our job and report back to you, that's all.
Thank you. Any other board reports? Gary?
Okay. Yeah, we're going to have a car show this weekend out there at the park. I would hope everybody would support it. All the money is used for the parks, we don't have any grants to help us right now. One of the parks that is the last to be addressed, actually, no, there are two parks last to be addressed. One is in Green Meadows on Dyke's Road and the other one is out on Hundred-Ninety-Third, I think. Neither one have had anything done to them yet. We're required to do things. And just for everybody's information, Astronaut's Park Foundation was responsible for the barn being finished properly and not left kind of half-done. And the other thing was that George Morris upgraded it and made it really something to behold. And he did that on his money and his time. So, this town pulls together. And that's what we need to continue to do if we expect to get anywhere. It's important that you come out and support this affair on Saturday. So, I'll be looking for everybody, I hope to be there, God willing. And I'll probably have my bunny on a leash because it's a very stressful thing. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Any additional board reports? Seeing none, we're councilmember comments. I'd like to go first, if I may, only because I have something that we're gonna do. So, Russell, if you would, Aster, if you'd please come up. Yeah, up to the podium. Come on up to the podium here. Go ahead. If you would read, Russell, we've got a proclamation for you, so we would like it read. Russell's gonna read it.
Whereas on November third, nineteen thirty-eight, Astronaut was born in Mandeville, Jamaica. And whereas through his family's experience of living amongst the natural beauty of Jamaica and through his father's passion for nature, a true love and appreciation for nature was ingrained within Aster. And whereas having attended the Jamaican School of Agriculture, trained at the London Zoo, and continued his education at the University of the West Indies, Aster's love for the natural world was further cultivated and solidified. And whereas Aster and Bertie brought their family to live in Rolling Oaks in nineteen ninety-three. And whereas with Bertie, Aster raised four sons, one daughter, and ten grandchildren within this community. And whereas Aster joined the Rolling Oaks Civic Association in nineteen ninety-three and served on the board as president from nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas with a lifelong foundation of community service, Aster served on the charter committee for the incorporation of the town of Southwest Ranches. And whereas in July of two thousand, Aster was elected by popular vote as an inaugural councilmember and dedicated ten years of service to the town. And whereas through his dedication to preserving the town's beautiful natural spaces, Aster founded the Astronaut Parks Foundation in two thousand eight, raising and donating over a hundred and ten thousand dollars to enhance park and recreational spaces for all to enjoy. And whereas in two thousand eleven, Aster retired from the town council but has continued to enthusiastically champion the town's park system, which increases property values and enhances the vitality and beauty of our community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Southwest Ranches that November third, two thousand eighteen, shall be recognized as Astronaut Day in the town of Southwest Ranches, dated this fifteenth day of November, two thousand eighteen. Signed, Mayor Doug McKay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and everybody assembled here. I'm not feeling very well, but I'm very grateful for this honor. And I can tell you that I don't live in Southwest Ranches anymore, but my heart is always here. And I give as much, as many more years of service to this town as I possibly can because this is my town. I regard it as such. So, thank you all very much for this commendation and I will appreciate it for the rest of my life. Thank you very much.
It's an honor, a pleasure. Thank you all for allowing me to take the lead and do that, appreciate it. Anybody who'd like your name?
Aster. You can't run out now. Everybody here needs to know that Aster was also honored and have an Astronaut Day from the Broward County. He was given that at his birthday, his eightieth birthday, which just passed.
So...
It seems like you've served this town forever and you just keep going and going and going. And believe me, if I could've bought one of the little bunnies banging on the drum, I would've. And you still moved to another place and we all know that your heart is here. I mean, Aster, I think everybody in here is just so proud of you. And to be able to call you the honorable Astronaut, I think just fits you just perfect. And congratulations and I'll see you Saturday.
Feel better. Feel better. All right. Who'd like to go for a public comment, council member comment still? Yeah, council member comments. I took the lead on that one. No, Andy's at the end of it. We're still in council member comment. I was gonna let you, when it comes to you, before we get into other. Anybody wanna go next?
I think I wanna wait. Let somebody else go first.
Bob? You wanna wait?
I think it's gonna take a couple of meetings to get warmed up.
That's okay. All right. Okay, Gary, I'll let Gary go first.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I got a list. All right. It's a good list.
Let me interject one quick second. So, just 'cause you are new here, any town stuff that we wanna discuss or talk about that's not on the agenda, or whatever we wanna bring up, this is the only opportunity we ever get to talk about it. You've been sitting in the audience long enough to know that, but I try to remind people and I try to get people to participate sometimes, and I don't get much participation, so just a heads up. Be assured, I'll show up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Quite a crowd, very enthusiastic. I'd like to really thank the veterans for coming tonight. It is our honor to have you here. It's our honor to have you live in our town and share all your experiences with it. Coming from a military family, I can tell you as the son of a veteran and have lived on numerous air bases for the first 16 years of my life, I can tell you the kind of life you lived, and you know, the expression, "Thank you for your service," it's almost turning into a cliche. The service aspect of it is unbelievable, where your father doesn't come home for days at a time when there's alerts, vacations are haphazard at best, and you suddenly discover you're going to live into another country in the next 48 hours. So, it's a very interesting life. It's one I would not trade for the world, and I fully identify with all those years of service you put in, and I thank you for it. You can never say thank you enough for our veterans. They are what protect our country, they are what makes our country strong, and they also, most people don't realize that, they are more or less the moral fiber and character of our society. I would like everybody to know that and to realize that. The other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Astor for his service to our town. It's going on about 25 years now since he's moved here. He has served in so many numerous capacities to our town and continues to do so. And I hope he feels better, and I'm going to see him hopefully this Saturday at the car show. And the other thing I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to be Vice Mayor. It's an honor and a privilege to be up here. And Doug, don't get sick, okay? So, this is what I mentioned-
You're feeling just fine if I do. I have no worries.
Yeah, it's, and I wanna thank the town, as I mentioned earlier, went right after I was sworn in by my son. I wanna thank the town and the residents of the town for having so much confidence in me, and it is indeed gratifying. It's so difficult to describe, it's, you belong to a club that's very, very small, because our town is young, and it's, few people know what I'm talking about, where you've worked so hard during the years to earn that, and it is an earned position. I would like to mention that in it. And I'll be working tirelessly for the next four years to earn your trust and to keep your trust. And I wanna thank everybody for allowing me to sit up here, because I work for all of you, okay? Make no mistake about it. I work for all of you, we all do, but I work for all of you. Just a couple of things to mention, that we've got the car show coming up on the 17th, which is this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 at the barn. A lot of fun, it's very interesting, and I understand there's gonna be a chili festival, so come hungry. We have the Fun Horse Show on the 8th of Saturday, 8th of December, from, and I don't mean that December, I mean the month of December. She'll be there running things, though, and doing a great job, by the way. From 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 PM. And we're also gonna have, just worthy of note, Broward County Property Appraiser Marty Care's office will be here on the 6th from 2:00 to 4:00, that's a Thursday. And the Flow Mobile, which is becoming extremely popular, will be here on the 27th, was here today. And we, on the 27th of, right after the holidays, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM on a Thursday, so I wanna mention that, that we do that. And once again, just in closing, I just wanna mention, say thank you to the veterans. Thank you for coming here, thank you for serving your country and serving us. It goes way beyond what most people, what most people think. Words really, really don't do it justice. And I also wanna thank the residents one more time for allowing me to be up here. It is an honor. If I look back 40 years ago, I'm wearing my Florida tie in case nobody noticed, 40 years ago this year, almost right about now, I graduated from University of Florida, and nobody could've described this scene to me 40 years ago in a way it would've made any sense to me. And I just wanna say thank you all for allowing me to be here. That's it.
Freddie? Go ahead, Freddie.
Okay. First thing I wanna do is I wanna thank the person that has sat up on this board with me quite a bit, sitting out in the audience. Steve, I wanna thank you for all the time and the leadership you have shown, and I appreciated working with you.
We have a little report from your MPO. The parking ride, the parking ride is done, at least for this year. We did have some resistance, and it came from Weston, I believe, but no other than Cooper City and a member that also sits on the board, Miss Patty Good, came to our rescue and it was defeated. So, the parking ride is done, however, I feel that they're never gonna give up, they're just gonna keep going. So, we will address this again a year down the road. The widening of the roadway expansion, that also was one of the projects that was turned down right now. They also work with budgets, so maybe it wasn't in their budget this year to do something like that, so that's kinda been on the back burner also. I would like to say thank you for everybody for coming out. This was like a packed house, it was really, really nice to see. I wanna thank all the vets. My father also was a vet, he was in the 101st Paratroopers, so I appreciate all your work and effort. I wanna thank the Boy Scouts for coming out and doing such a wonderful job. Thank you, guys, it's much appreciated, even the moms, they work very hard at this. On not such a lighter note, we got these cards in the mail, and with these cards comes responsibility. And the responsibility is to get to you the proper and correct information. And this was not all proper and correct. As you well know, it said that there would be on the agenda, and it is not on the agenda. There's a bunch of things I could complain about, but I think what yous need to know is this. If you're going to do something and put something out where it affects every single person in the entire town and not just an area, because no matter what you put in this town affects everyone, straight across the board. This is something that you didn't get, George. This went out to the Sunshine Ranches homeowners about an issue with tractor supply, okay? What should've been done, it should've been talked over with either legal or the town administrator. This is what we pay him the big money for, the town administrator, to go through all this and check it and make sure that it is correct and it has all the correct information on it. So, I can probably say, David, if you have any questions, or you need to put something in a newsletter, or a card, or a mailing, or whatever, you should probably check with the town administrator first. And last, but definitely not least, congratulations, Bob. I welcome you aboard, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee, that means a lot coming from you.
All right. Bob, you good?
Ah, you know-
Or you wanna take in?
All this prodding, I think I will have something to say.
Okay, go right ahead.
I also wanna thank the veterans. I come from a military family as well. My dad was a Colonel in the USMC. I grew up with Marines all around me, that's probably why I didn't serve. They were some pretty crazy people back in the 60s, but we were always very proud of my father. My father was one of those military leaders that disappeared for a year at a time. He was in charge of military police for the most part, and those are the guys that, he was in Korea, he was in Vietnam, he was in places, I'll never know. But we were very proud of him, and he taught me tremendous respect for the military. And, you know, I say it all the time, and it's certainly cliche, but when I say thank you for your service, I always think of my dad. And gentlemen and ladies, thank you for your service. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome, thank you. Yeah, I would like to thank all the veterans, thank you all for coming out, thank you for signing the blank check to give you a life, so that's greatly, greatly appreciated. I don't think some people realize how far that goes. We've lost many, and because of them, we do have what we have today. And those of us that were fortunate enough to come home, I did not serve, my dad did serve, he was a bomber pilot in World War II, flew B-17s and B-29s, so I'm a little bit familiar with the issues. But thank you all, greatly appreciated, and I don't think we could probably give you enough gratitude, so thank you. Bob, congratulations, welcome aboard. I'm good. Thank you all for coming out. Andy? Keith? Keith's gonna go there.
I'll be brief, Mayor. Absolutely echo the sentiments in thanking the veterans. Grandfather was in World War II, so I'm sure a lot of us share similar stories from service. Absolutely happy birthday to Astor. It's wonderful what he's done for this town and is still-
Continues.
Continues today, despite no longer even living here, and it's wonderful to see that. On the legal front, I stepped into a meeting in Town Hall this week, maybe it was last week, that was a little bit unexpected, but good. We were visited by the Town of Pembroke Park because they're having an issue, and they wanted to know our thoughts on the issue. And their issue was that their neighboring municipality called the Town of West Park was trying to deannex portions of their municipality, and they wanted to know, how could they possibly deal with an issue like that? And luckily, we had a lot to say. And the good news is, is they've employed an entire lobbying fleet this year. It is their number one priority to try to get some active legislation going to try to prevent the deannexation of smaller municipalities. And as a result, we have a, finally, a very nice partner to go to Tallahassee with and to try to spread the word. One of their council members, I believe it was the Vice Mayor, Andy, serves on the League of Cities at the state level, and has actually created a subcommittee for smaller municipalities who are threatened by the larger municipalities. So, it's becoming a more prevalent issue, and as a result, we should be looking forward to a good legislative session. Just for an update, Code Enforcement meeting this month is Monday as a result of the election, so anyone who wishes to come to Code will actually be Monday coming up. Some final words, obviously, congratulations to Councilmember Jablonsky, and for Councilmember Hartman. My father would be incredibly thrilled to see Councilmember Hartman up there. For those of you who don't know, back in the day, Councilmember Hartman was a, worked for Sunpass, I forgot the exact title, but it was in the administration side of Sunpass. What was the title? It was, it's a good title. Director, director, director of Sunpass. I knew it was a good title. And my father didn't really understand that Bob was the director and not the guy who fixed the Sunpass. So, after he met Bob, he would consistently say to him, "I'm having some issues, can you come to my car?" And I remember Bob looking at him like, "What is he talking about?" So, he would've been thrilled to see you here today, it's a long time coming, so absolutely congratulations to you on that. Final legal note, we're working with Ways Pro on some contract amendments that will be coming to you soon. We'll discuss those more in more detail in a little bit, but what we're trying to do is lock in the residential rate for a longer period of time to not continue to have an escalation or a true-up, which is what the contract calls for, so we're working on negotiations on that, and we sent them drafts this week of modifications to the agreement. Finally, and this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so what we like to say consistently on Thanksgiving is, we hope that everyone this Thanksgiving counts their blessings, and in Florida, they can recount their blessings. Andy, it's all you.
I have to be the straight man now after the comedy act. Actually, Mayor, I'll be very brief. You know, first of all, I do wanna thank the veterans who came out tonight, certainly for being here tonight, but far more importantly than that, the service they've given to the country and to all of us. So, thank you for that. I'd like to thank the Scouts for being here tonight, you made a, what would've been a very good celebration, just that, and recognition that much better, so I thank you all for being here tonight. I do wanna offer my congratulations to Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jablonsky, and new Councilmember Hartman. Certainly wish you all the best, we're here to make sure you're successful. We, and I'll confess now that we got so caught up from a staff level in the election that we had on your seat and moving forward for the swearing-in tonight, that we completely forgot that we had to re-swear in Vice Mayor Jablonsky until he reminded me Tuesday night. So, thank you for that. I know I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be here in that for a while going forward, and it's deserved, so, but congratulations to both of you. And other than that, I just wanna wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. I don't have a joke like Keith does to go with that, but thank you all again for being here tonight.
All right.
Sorry I missed the public comments, but I wanna congratulate all of the new officers that are installed, Bob Hartman and Gary and Vice Mayor, but I would never have been able to live with myself since I missed the public comments. The grand dam of Sunshine Ranches was 94 years old on Armistice Day, and I think she deserves a happy birthday. Now I can live with myself.
Okay.
This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a continuing services agreement with Weekly Asphalt Paving Inc. for roadway repair and traffic sign maintenance services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
David Kazinsky, 6411 Hollaty Trail. Just a question, isn't Weekly Asphalt affiliated with the Weekly Brothers who tried to deannex their property? Thanks.
Steve Reikries, 5120 Southwest 195 Terrace. I will say that I am a firm believer that business is business. I will say that, um, I am a firm believer that, uh, business is business. And, uh, um, while I disagree with, uh, the commercial, um, efforts to try and, uh, take over portions of our town, um, businessmen are in business to make business. So, uh, um, I certainly would not hold them against that. Hold that against them in contract negotiations where we can both benefit. Uh, let's not, uh, shoot ourselves in the foot, um, and we don't need to. Thank you.
Seeing, uh, okay.
I agree with him. You know, business is business. And we're getting the best price from them, so be it. I mean, everybody does what they gotta do. Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any comments up here?
Just one. When Weekly's called to do a service, fix a pothole, put up a sign, those sorts of things, what kind of service level do they have in place? Do they have to do it next day? Do they have to do it within a week? What's the deal there? Maybe a better question for you, Andy.
Generally speaking, because there, there is management of traffic and, and setup, uh, of equipment, what we try to do is generally bunch those things together. So, we try to wait till we have, unless we have an emergency situation, we'll try to bunch those and bring them out. And their response has, has been very prompt. We, we have not had any issues. If there is a delay from the time we, where potholes reported to us to its service, it's more because we don't want to bring them out one at a time.
Right.
So-
Mobilization costs.
Exactly, exactly. We just try to, to make the best that, minimize that as best we can. So, we try to bunch those calls for service. But from a responsiv- uh, responsiveness level, they've, they've, they've really been outstanding. We've had no issues.
So, you're comfortable. They're a good partner.
Very, very much so. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments up here? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 12.
Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a year-end budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is closed. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I, I would like, I would like to have Marty, if you could, uh-
Go ahead.
Explain everything.
Marty? You're up to bat. Try a different one. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and welcome to Councilmember Hartman. Um, it's a pleasure, uh, to work with you as well. Um, we'll be getting, uh, new bank signatory cards shortly. As soon as I get the minutes from the, uh, town clerk for tonight, which the bank requires, so that will be forthcoming, uh, as a heads up. Uh, before I get started in terms of the year-end budget adjustment, I'd just like to preface that, uh, the budget adjustment tonight does not in any way, shape, or form memorialize, uh, the town's financial position. What we're doing tonight, uh, which is usual and customary, uh, every fiscal year is to clean up our individual funds and our individual departments, uh, true-up, uh, as you would say, uh, to, um, be able to adhere to our town charter. That's a requirement by our town charter, is, uh, to true-up on an annual basis. Uh, the items as presented to you on Exhibit A, it's a two-pager. Uh, we have, uh, only two funds that, uh, require necessary adjustment. One is the general fund. Um, for the television and video and, and the audience, uh, the agenda has, uh, specific detail of the individual line items, um, the performance for the year. Uh, so, uh, that pretty much stands by itself and, and, uh, is always, uh, welcome if you have any questions, uh, to, uh, feel free to, to, uh, contact the town in any way, shape, or form. The, uh, general fund revenue items, you will see adjustments, uh, increases. Of course, the positives are all, uh, exceeding the budget. Uh, you will see some, uh, negatives. Uh, these items have to be adjusted ba- downward. Uh, they're generally small items. In terms to do, into, terms of the original departments, uh, to concentrate on, on the general fund department, um, a, four, uh, departments, uh, have ne- necessary adjustments with offsetting revenue adjustment. Uh, only one had, uh, an instance with a small overage, uh, regarding, uh, expenditures, uh, which was anticipated extraordinary and, um, uh, the, the litigation of $76,917. Um, the legislative department, uh, is, the increase is needed as a result of the success of the Scholarship Education Advisory Board. Uh, we conservatively budget about, uh, uh, or exactly 7,500. They exceeded the budget to $18,693. So, you will see offsetting, uh, $11,193, uh, increase in the revenue as well as in, uh, the legislative department. The building and permitting services, we, uh, welcome. And, uh, I got a little bit of data to convey to you that we had a boom year, a record year with the number of permits, uh, the number of, uh, inspections especially, uh, that have been significantly increased as well as the, uh, the, the dollar volume of each permit increase. So, in effect, uh, that will pass through to our growth and trim and assess value uh, because obviously each permit drawn is based on the, uh, property construction value. And if your individual pitch, uh, permits rise, um, it will pass through in longevity, in perpetuity, um, with, uh, the tax base once the projects are completed. Uh, the increase necessary in that account was $378,000. Um, and, uh, the revenues derived is close to $500,000. Uh, the town, uh, receives a 25% cost recovery sharing portion. Uh, so that, uh, was a significant, um, addition to our revenue base. The, uh, Code Enforcement zoning services required a, a reduction. And our volunteer fire services had a reduction primarily due to a, uh, assistance to firefight grant. Uh, we've aggressively pursued that, uh, with our grant Emily and Community Services, Emily Acetti's, uh, efforts as well as the volunteer fire department's efforts. Uh, however, well, we didn't receive that grant last year. Uh, however, we're going to be applying for it again this year. So, with that in mind, uh, turn it back to you, uh, if anyone has any questions and, uh, I'd like your, um, consent for approval. Thank you. Oh, wait, uh, let me move to the solid waste fund. I forgot about that. I apologize. Page two. Solid Waste Fund, uh, was directly, involves the impact to the Hurricane Irma. Uh, the, um, total cost incurred due to Hurricane Irma was $3,699,066 for fiscal year 18. And, uh, due to that, uh, we need to increase the expenditure in accordance with our town charter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alright, that was long-winded, but go ahead. Got two questions, Bob?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, um. For everybody who's all excited about what we were just talking about here, it's important. I mean, the good news is we came up $250,000 favorable. That's, that's the good news. That's the really good news. But Marty, I know we just finished the budget and that's all submitted and that's all taken care of. Some of these variances, like the half a million dollars higher in building permits and all that, did you take that into consideration in the 18-19 budget? So, have you made adjustments in the budget before? Because you've seen these numbers for a while. Have you made adjustments in this year's, the new budget, based on what our experience is here on the actuals?
Uh, and specifically as a re- in regards to the building permitting, we tweaked it slightly. Uh, building permitting is very volatile, uh, highly unpredictable. Um, and to be conservative, I think we just did a five or 10% factor. Um, I could meet with you, uh, tomorrow, uh, to tell you exactly. But we look at three-year, five-year trend and we adjust accordingly. Uh, so, uh, each, each line item is analyzed, uh, with, with, um, uh, expectations or, or reductions, increases. So, uh, you could be sure we did and I could let you know the specific amount later.
Okay, we'll talk. I just see a number of fees that didn't meet expectations and if, if we made adjustments, great. You know, the ones that, most of the ones in red are fee-oriented, the way I'm looking at it, so. We'll talk tomorrow.
Fine.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 13.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the second amendment to the settlement agreement with Broward County for the litigation styled City of Sunrise et al. versus Broward County and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any additional questions?
Andy wants.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I just, just, if you give me 30 seconds, I just want to explain what this issue is.
Go right ahead.
Uh, there's a site over near the landfill in Coconut Creek, the one along the Turnpike, the Mount Trashmore, uh, that, that's called the Alpha 250 site that's owned by Broward County. When the inter-local agreement with the county on solid waste came to an end in 2012, the county wanted some time to consider what they were gonna do with that site. And it's a question of whether they find something that benefits all the municipalities from, uh, from a solid waste standpoint. Uh, and if they're not able to do that, that site's to be sold and then the proceeds for that to be split up among the municipalities that participated in the inter-local agreement. The county hasn't come to a final determination. They've asked for a little bit more time to go through that process. This is just extending that agreement to allow them a little bit more time in that process. Thanks.
Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Number 14, discussion item. Andy, do you want to jump in at the front of this?
Yeah, Mayor, as, as you and I had, had discussed previously and, and, uh, Councilmember Schroeder had, had alluded to a, a postcard that was mailed out by the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. There were, and I, and I, I think that postcard may, may have gotten more people here tonight. But there were some, uh, I'll say factual inaccuracies in that and I did want to touch on that, just to, just to set the record straight, if I may. Uh, the, the mailing, the postcard that went out specifically mentioned Tractor Supply or Tractor Supply Company in four different places within that mailing. I, I want to be clear, Tractor Supply is not on tonight's agenda. Tractor Supply has not been scheduled for any future agenda. They have not submitted an application. So, there's, there's absolutely nothing to be considered at this time, anything even remotely to do with, with Tractor Supply. Uh, the mailer mentioned a site, uh, to quote from it, "At the easternmost end of Loray Road." Uh, tonight's general discussion item addresses the Flamingo Road corridor in total. It is not site-specific. There is no individual property that will be discussed this evening. Uh, the mailer also mentioned a letter of intent. And I, and I just want to be clear to the resident that the town is not a party to any letter. We've seen no such letter. If a letter of intent does exist, it would be between two private entities. The town would not be involved. If it is the case, it'd be a normal, you know, business practice for a developer to identify and secure a property of interest to them as they go about doing their due diligence. Uh, so I just, I just wanted to be clear on that. This is not a Tractor Supply discussion. It's not a, a discussion on, on any particular site. And, and as, as Councilmember Schroeder, uh, said as well, I just want to reinforce to the, the association president, i- if there's items that are coming up in the town that are of concern to them, I would be happy at any point to meet with them just to make sure that the correct information is being conveyed. And it's, I just wanted to set the record straight as far as the mailer and what the expectations were for tonight's discussion, Mayor, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. Okay. How do you want to, uh, open this and start this? You have, uh, not a PowerPoint, but it is-
Well, we, we, we do have one, one graphic that, that we'd actually have to scroll through that shows that corridor. Uh, it's one I know you're familiar with, but I know you had some thoughts on it and I know you'd wanted to bring it forward. So, I, I don't have a, a presentation scheduled. It's just, but again, this is not about Tractor Supply. It's not about a specific lot in, in, in particular. This is more of a question of whether it be the will of the council to consider a, a change to allow some commercial zoning along Flamingo Road.
Okay, so do we have something? There we go. Put up. Gotta get the other ones up. Yeah, without a doubt. Yes. Okay. So, uh, let me make some people aware of some facts that people may not understand. We have some parcels in this town that are surrounded by Cooper City. Um, I think everybody's fairly familiar with the development of Country Glen, which is in Cooper City. And there is two parcels of property just to the south of Country Glen. And those two parcels are front and back of each other. Um, Country Glen goes in the development and makes a left turn and goes behind these two properties. So, Country Glen, uh, is to the north of this property and to the west of this property. And to the south of this property, there's Potential Church, which is also in Cooper City. So, the parcel is surrounded by Cooper City. So, if you see the parcel in blue, well, let me get up and point it out to you. So, this parcel right here and this parcel right here are surrounded by Cooper City. So, that's Cooper City at the top. This is Cooper City at the top. And it goes all the way back and behind this property. And then down here on this side, right here, this is Cooper City. So, these two parcels are surrounded all the way around by Cooper City. Okay? Uh, you know, a nursery guy owns this one and I'm not sure who owns that one. But, 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 yeah, there's a house, uh, rundown garage. Uh, I think the, I think it's rented out. I'm not sure. I don't know. I haven't looked into any of this. It's not, not my deal and my project. I have nothing to do with any of this. I'm just sharing thoughts, discussions, ideas, so people understand, uh, what we're dealing with. So, this is one section that is affected, not mostly by the town. It's two parcels that are in our town that are surrounded by Cooper City. So, if you scroll on up a little, other direction, sorry, now. Um, so, stop right there. So, now you have, at the very top, you have Cooper City. Then you have Davy Feed is right here. This is Davy Feed. This is, is, uh, Our Bishop McCarthy Church or School. School, church, whatever you want to consider it. So, this has Cooper City on one side of it and a school on the other. Uh, I don't know how big that parcel is, but I'm gonna guess it's, uh, nine or 10 acres, okay? Now, if you want to scroll- Now, if you want to scroll down some more, pardon me? That lot is in the town. Davy Feed is in the town of South, that's Davy Feed. So keep going down, okay? So keep going a little farther here. Okay, stop right there. So this is the church on the corner. This is in Cooper City, okay? The church, if I understand correctly, and Andy, correct me if I'm mistaken here, that this church bought this property. Okay? So this church had, has this parking lot over here. But they bought this with intent to put a parking lot, which we are not going to allow and it's not zoned for it. But that was their intent. This is all Cooper City. That's where those ball fields are going. The park, they are, they're still building. So anyhow, so that's just another scenario, so you understand. So keep going down. All right? All right, hold up, go a little bit more. All right, hold up right there. So now, not only the parks, but this is the new school. And this is Shot Memorial right here, okay? And here's the cut-through street that everybody's using within Sunshine Ranches off of Appaloosa to go in and out and around. Which ultimately, the intent is to close that cut-through street. At some point, some way. We're in discussions now with Cooper City, the county on who owns that road. And if we can just gate it off right here, whatever we can do to... We've had a lot of complaints related to that. So there's a, so this is all Cooper City. So scroll down a little more, stop. This is Southwest Ranches. Up there's Cooper City. And the high-power lines run right through here. I believe that's about a three-hundred-foot right-of-way buffer, so to speak. Three hundred and thirty? Good, I stand corrected. Thank you. So all this, south of here, is Southwest Ranches. Goes all the way down to Sheridan Street, okay? You have some residential homes in here and whatnot. This is part of the parcel of that forty-something acres on the corner of Sheridan and Flamingo. So that goes all the way to here. So all that is the rest of this other parcel up here, all in Southwest Ranches. So part of the discussion, I think the HOA is well-aware of it because this group at one time went around to all the HOAs in town and met more than once or twice, not only with Sunshine Ranches, with Rolling Oaks, Country Estates, I think they even may have gone to, to discuss about them wanting to develop that at one time. It fell by the wayside, I don't know where it's at. I haven't heard about it, hasn't come up anytime recently. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of what's here and what's surrounding us. Because it's not all residential around all these other spots. So the other question is, or the other thought process was, who wants to build a house and live on Flamingo Road? So if you scroll back up and just watch what's kind of on Flamingo Road, keep going. You have Shot Memorial here, which is in Cooper City, okay? Keep going. You have the new school. Here's that culvert. This is how they're going to get into that park that's being built. So everybody's using this culvert here. Frankfurt Academy, okay? So that's the parks. They're building more parking, and I think they're building more parking back here, that I heard. I ran into one of the new council members in Cooper City at Costco the other day. And we were sitting there having a hot dog and we started discussing and talking about it. So we were talking about this, the park they were building. So go on up. So hold up right there. So you have the rest of this parcel here. And then you have Southwest Ranches again. And you go on up. Okay, slow down. And where are we, tractor? I don't know what they were talking about. The site was down lower for them. Pardon? Yep, yeah, hold up, hold up. Yeah, this is Archbishop McCarthy, correct. So Archbishop McCarthy, as everybody knows, is a school. It butts up to, where's Country Glen's up, the other way. Okay, is there any way we can move over that way some? Shift the whole thing to get them back here? Or we don't have that cut? You don't have that piece? I just want to show you, this is surrounded, these two parcels are surrounded by Cooper City. Well, Country Glen is Cooper City. So I guess part of the question would be, why would Sunshine Ranches? Or why would anybody in town have an issue with doing something on these two parcels? I mean, just as a question or a common sense thing. It's surrounded by Cooper City. It does not butt up to Sunshine Ranches or even Southwest Ranches, other than just these two parcels. There's a driveway that goes in here all the way down to this one. And this one has a culvert and they can add a culvert if they wanted to for here. Not the case. Town attorney, no, hold on, I'm not going to tell you. I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to preach to you. But Keith, if you would step in here regarding if somebody wants to build something or you wanted to approve something, it can't go anywhere from here because it's Cooper City on both sides. That's one thing, but go ahead.
Re-zonings are always site-specific, but you also want to avoid spot zoning, which is why you're looking at an entire corridor.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sorry. It's going to be a discussion. Anybody who wants to get up and say something can come up to the mic and speak. We don't want to go back and forth like this because we won't, we'll lose control of the meeting. I was just giving everybody like a show and tell of what's on that Flamingo corridor and showing them what's surrounding things. Listen, we're here to do what the residents want, okay? But you've got to pay attention to the whole town, okay? You can't, you can't look at something and say, okay, I can tell you right there, those two parcels, it doesn't affect anybody in this town, except the people that own those two properties. And what do they want to do with them? Who knows? Come up to the mic and speak.
Hey Doug, I got asked that as residents come up, if they're, if they live in Sunshine Ranches, identify themselves.
Sure, absolutely. So state your name and where you live.
Mayor, let's do this organized. How many minutes do you want each speaker to get?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, and we will set timers on two minutes per person. And sometimes to short-circuit discussion, you may want the council to speak first. No one in the council has spoken. I don't know if you want to hear from the public first or the council, but whatever you wish.
You want to hear from the public first.
All right, okay, it will be two minutes and Russell...
Ready to get set, go?
Yep.
Okay. I've looked at both these, three of these properties, I've been all over them. And the first thing that everybody has to realize is that we control what goes in there, period. End of subject. If we don't like it, it ain't going to fly, period. So you have to keep an open mind. If you're going to sit up there and say, oh no, they have to have a house on it, that's it. Or it just lays vacant. Or it's a tax-free write-off because they've got ag on it and they're paying two hundred dollars on ten acres for the next fifty years. So you're on a four-lane road. It is a business road. Now, there is Davy Feed operating right there on one of those strips. There's three strips there. Two of them are surrounded, don't affect anybody. The other one, they want to buy half of the property. And it's got power lines. It's got Shot Memorial on one side. And I guarantee you, there's at least a hundred and fifty cars parked there every day because I've been there. And the place is loaded. Where they're coming from, I have no idea. Are they renting it? Maybe. And if you look at Appaloosa, behind, I went by the other day and then we talked to the council member from Cooper City. And I said, why are they bulldozing that all around the lakes? And he said, well, we need parking. So all down Appaloosa, which it butts right up to Appaloosa, that ball field is going to have parking all the way around, right up against Appaloosa. And they're going to put a few little picnic areas, you know, benches. There's nothing to block your view. They also have lights. And oops, I'm out of time. Well, I can tell you a lot more about it if you're interested.
Bobby Parker again. What I raised my hand for, Doug, is you stood up there on the mic and says, why would anyone oppose to this? Well, that, to me, was an open door to somebody to say something. And I think that the majority of us in Sunshine Ranches don't want any commercial, period. That's the way I see it. But, you know, whatever the majority wants is what we're going to do. Thank you.
Ed Gonzalez, and I've lived in Sunshine Ranches for forty years. Before that, I lived in North Miami, Florida. And I watched the cancer spread everywhere. Businesses on this end of the block, businesses on that end of the block. And as soon as they opened the doors, the rest of them all wanted to come and build. I don't want to see that in here. The reason I came here is because I wanted to raise my family in a rural environment, not in a commercial zone. I'm sure that whoever owns those properties today are doing just fine the way they are. And I don't see any reason for us to be building any Tractor Supplies or anything else that does not belong in our community. I look forward to my children's children being able to live here the way we live today, not the way you guys want to see it done.
David Kozenski, sixty-four eleven Hollity Trail. Mr. Mayor, I believe it was Lori Parish that asked you the question if you had met with Tractor Supply individuals about that property.
I told you I had not.
I believe it's my time, Mayor, please respect my time. I respect your time, please, okay? And you had admitted it at that meeting. So we had a quorum at that meeting. Our quorum voted on a motion by one of the members that we didn't want Tractor Supply in Sunshine Ranches. And, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors in the area that don't want commercial, any commercial activity in that area. Thank you. I finished before two.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth, one hundred ninety-ninth Avenue. It's very simple. The concrete stops here. It started this town, continues this town. The concrete stops here.
Steve Brightcrisp. You know, I can't help, when I hear that presentation, I can't help, and all the discussion that Cooper City's all the way around it. I can't help but think of Country Estates out there. No, we're nowhere near this. But you know what? Pembroke Pines did the same thing to us when they put in that new school with all the lights that destroyed that neighborhood out there. Did they care about us? No, they didn't care about us. Let's be better neighbors to Cooper City than Pembroke Pines was to us. Let's have some consideration for them and the homes that are right behind that. They deserve it. The other thing that I would say is this, that the folks that really, really we should be listening to are the folks that live in that community closest to it. Because they're the ones that are going to be affected by this the most. And from what I'm hearing, they're not in favor of it. And so we should not be in favor of it. We should not be putting commercial into those areas unless those neighborhoods have bought into it and they're comfortable with it and they say, yes, it's okay. But that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that they're not comfortable with it, that they don't want it. And therefore, our council, who represents us, should be standing up for them. Thank you.
First-time resident here, Maylin Beckman, sixty-three hundred Malaluka Trail. And I am a business owner there, I'm a horse trainer. And I just wonder, the commercial income that you guys would be getting from that area? I want my rural living also, but I also think about that small area, that what kind of money would it bring to the council, to the town? And I think that's why the town wants it here. Is that correct? No? I mean, so would we not be getting more income from having a commercial business, like a Tractor Supply, on that location? Because if it, if we don't get income from commercial, then why do we not want it there? However, if the town can only find money by putting surcharges on farms like mine, and then we now lose a chance of having more horse boarding facilities because if we keep on taxing us, then we would not be able to keep the services that we would like to keep for other people with horses that need to rent our facility. So I'm not, I don't love the fact that we have Cooper City putting an optimist there because I'm thinking about the vagrants that would be coming into that area, but it's growth. And I understand the cancer part of it, but I also just feel that that land has been sitting there vacant for a very long time. And if we can bring money to the town, it might be something to consider. That's it.
Robin Ditzian, Sunshine Ranches, fifty-five oh one Hollity Trail. I, my parents bought the property back in seventy-nine. We built our house in eighty-three. We love the rural area that we grew up in. And I see this cancer, as they called it, growing. We now have that ball field that's on the corner of Sterling and Flamingo. I don't know where they're going to be parking, but I know that I come into Sterling and now it takes me longer to get into my home from Sterling than it used to take me. I don't like all this, this cancer, this commercial properties coming up. If Cooper City owns it, I don't know how they got it. Probably somebody paid, did something. I mean, you just told, made a comment that the church bought that house that's over on the corner, over by that church. And I'm like, that was a house. I remember when the people lived there. I grew up in this abodehead. The, what was the name, Mom, of the people that owned the house? Dulce or whatever it was? The kid who shot himself in the head? There was a kid who shot himself in the head. I used to show horses against him. And it's just like, this cancer has got to stop. We can't have it. Keep Sunshine Ranches rural, please. Thank you.
You guys wear my cowboy boots today, so congratulations, Gary. Congratulations, Bob. Just like her, I'm a baby to Sunshine Ranches. I've only been there twenty-three years. And I've seen a change in the twenty-three years. I come home, I worship every Sunday, and I have to wait at least ten to twelve minutes from Flamingo to pass the church. And it just, I can't even think what it's going to be like with that new ball field. We moved out there from Miami to Pembroke Pines and we really wanted a rural lifestyle. I liked to enjoy our home and not be surrounded with neighbors on top of us because we liked the lifestyle. And I've seen a change. And I don't want any more traffic. I don't want any more buildings that is going to ruin that lifestyle. I'd like my kids, who are young, to grow up in this lifestyle I envisioned for them twenty-five years ago. Oh, six zero one one Hollity Trail, Rosewood.
Good evening, David Sears, five thousand Southwest, two oh one Terrace. I live in Country Estates right now. I'm developing a piece of property on the end that backs up to Country Estates on Malaluka. If you had a bigger picture, to the southwest, to the south of where the two properties are, is a retention pond. To the southwest of that is a retention pond. It would have no reflection, no traffic. It would have no reflection, no traffic. It's going to have additional traffic on Flamingo Road no matter what. Okay? So if you develop that property, it has no, there's no access into Southwest Ranches from that. Flamingo Road's going to be Flamingo Road. I've been out here for 28 years, okay? I grew up out here when we used to ride our buggies and our bikes in Pembroke Pines, and then they developed, um, Durango Estates. Okay? We need a little bit of commercial property in Southwest Ranches. If we don't, nobody's going to be able to afford to live here. I can tell you right now, I'm building that house, it's going to be $25,000 for everybody up here in tax base. I already paid $30,000 in impact fees and per, and permits. It's almost 15% of your $500,000. Okay? We need a little bit, okay? I live on 201st. You get off on 202, they have the, whatever church that is out there, in the middle of the night, you can't get out there half the time. Okay? We didn't develop, we didn't have that problem. Okay? That problem's there, all right? Flamingo Road, the problem's already there. If we don't develop it and get some tax base, no, your kids aren't going to be able to live here. Because when you pass away and you give the property to your kids, or you, your kids buy it from you, guess what? The state of Florida tells, or Broward County tells you, we deem the assessed value. Because I did that when I bought it from my mother, when my father passed away. And my taxes went from $3,800 to $11,000. Okay? And thank God the economy tanked where I can get my tax base down a little bit. We need commercial property here, a little bit, not a lot.
Hi, I'm Nancy Vians, and I'm on Appaloosa, and I actually back up to the 48 acres. I also back up to the property that the supposed tractor supply wants to purchase. And years ago, um, probably about six years ago, when the town tried to make us all commercial on that corner from Appaloosa to Flamingo, from Luray all the way to Sheridan, I went before the, um, Conferences Board and I worked with them. Worked with them. We tried to work out a plan that would satisfy some commercial, which we did. But you know what? After this, because we realized, you know, there does need to be some commercial, and that is a good commercial property. But after this and having this thrown down our throats, as far as the people that live on that area, we don't want commercial at all. We're totally against it. And like I asked you, Doug, when you said you talked to a lot of people, who did you talk to? You didn't talk to any of us, not one of us. We wouldn't even known about this if it hadn't been for the HOA coming and telling us. So you know what? You kind of have left a bad taste, and now we really don't want commercial. And you made the statement, who would want to live along Flamingo Road? Well, I'm a realtor. You have Country Glen, it's on Flamingo Road. You have all of Cooper City there that faces, people are living there, they're very happy. So that land could be made commer, um, homes. And as Lori Parish pointed out, you would get more tax base from homes.
Where, where do you live?
And commercial. I back up to the 48 acres and I back.
I asked you where you live, not where you own.
6810. I act, no, I live in Cooper City.
That's what I was inquiring.
But I live at my property, I'm there at my property more than I am at my house. I am there at my property with my horses. And I, you know what I hear at my barn right now? I hear from the shopping centers, I hear trucks dumping, I hear garbage banging, I hear from when they have the chili cook-off, I've had to have my bed up because my horses are so upset from the noise. And now you're wanting to put this in my backyard. More noise, more congestion, more people. You know what? We're tired of it.
Sorry, time's up.
I know. You don't want to hear what the people that live along there say. I understand.
I, I, I'm taking offense, I'm sorry. You just asked that woman where she lived, and she said she owns property on Appaloosa. I don't care where she lives. If she owns property, she has a right to speak.
I didn't, listen, I allow anybody a right to speak, Doug, so don't even go there. That's ridiculous.
No.
I get yelled at by this council half the time for allowing people to come speak.
Okay, but you asked her where she lived and you made a snide.
I asked her where she lived because I know she doesn't live in Sunshine Ranches.
Doesn't make a difference.
I know, but I just wanted to make a point.
But your point is wrong. She owns property.
Joel Gomacher, 6601 Appaloosa Trail. I live in the corner of Luray and Appaloosa, across the street from the nursery. Um, like the other people were saying, I hear all the noise that is going on with the construction. Uh, it's really annoying, and I am totally against a, a, a commercial on Flamingo Road.
Good evening. Sandra Farah, I am resident of Sunshine Ranches. I haven't been, um, coming for the last few months, so I'm not up on everything, but, um, this does concern me greatly. Not, in, in essence, not necessarily maybe those two properties up there, but the whole thing about the cancer and the spreading, especially south of Sterling. Because for years, over the last few years, I remember when that whole thing was, uh, the Malaluka trees and it was cleared and we had, um, the school put in, and first of all, we thought, oh, there's going to be a nice green area to compensate for it, and it was an open area of space. And then the shot center was a little bit further south, and then all of a sudden, for the last couple of years, it came up at some of our homeowners' meetings when I was on the board, and we talked about the parking. What the heck is all that parking? That they are renting out the property for parking. To me, that is, you know, um, not being a good neighbor by Cooper City. It is their land, and all we were told is they have control. Now we have control over this area. We still have control. And so I do think we need to listen to the residents, and I really feel sorry for whoever lives on Appaloosa Street, because it's not just Flamingo Road. All of those people on Appaloosa, I've seen so many houses go up for sale, and I go up that street. And I come in on Sterling and I'm wondering, they are not possibly thinking of putting an entrance on, on, off of Sterling because there's no space. And that bridge, I don't know how it's going to, you know, as it is, it's a two-lane road coming out, kind of. And how are they going to deal with all of that traffic? The whole thing is, I think, not what we need there. And it will spread. It's already a lost case of, a little more of a lost case further north, and that is what is going to happen. That creep is going to happen.
Elise Shapiro, 13251 Luray Road. Um, you know, my wife and I just moved out here, it's my first town hall meeting, and about four years ago, we started looking out here from East Hollywood, and if I went any further east where we live, we'd be on sand. And from a, as my wife calls me, a Jewish redneck kid that grew up on a big horse farm with 60, 80 horses in South Jersey, um, Southwest Ranches was the only place I could find within Broward County to be able to give my children a little bit of taste of what I grew up with. And we bought out here on Old Sheridan, we wound up selling because a home that we now live in came up. I rented on Appaloosa Trail, and I can still hear everything. You know, now we moved to Luray, we've got the horses, we've got the ponies. I've got a neighbor here, and whether he chooses to come up or not, had a dog lost on Luray Road from all the traffic flying down there in the morning. It's become a speed zone. I'd love to see that shot road cut off. Okay? My wife and I can be seen quite frequently, weekly, riding our horses around Sunshine Ranches. Okay? I came out here to get away from that. I'm a block and a half away from where you're talking about it. I did not come out here to have a rural horse community turned into a commercial property area. It's hard enough for me, in just the last three years, I keep seeing a lot of these five-acre, six-acre horse farms being chopped up into two-and-a-half-acre homes that will not be agriculture, they will not be livestock, they're not going to be equitarian properties as our town displays in all of the pictures here. I came out here to have a place with my family, a rural community, not a commercial.
Good evening, everybody. Anthony DeFeety, 13201 Luray Road. And I am the recipient that Billy was talking about, my dog. Uh, we had a three-year-old beautiful German Shepherd got hit and killed right on Luray Road by a speeder, and to this day, it still really hurts my wife and I and my daughter. Uh, we really enjoy living out in the ranches. We've been out here about five years, and, um, the idea of having a big commercial building, even though it may face on Flamingo, I still think that there's going to be a lot of traffic coming down from Volunteer Road, uh, between Sheridan Street and, uh, Sterling, or even Griffin, and just cutting through on Luray Road to get to Appaloosa. So I know that, I speak for my family and my neighbors, we would not want that.
Mike Hanley, uh, off of 205 in Country Estates. After Pembroke Pines put in that charter school out there, it is an abomination. The traffic on Griffin Road, Monday through Friday, because of those people going back and forth to that charter school, is unacceptable. Please don't put any more commercial property in Southwest Ranches. It sucks when you do. And, uh, the noise from that parkland school, when all those school horns go off, would wake up the heavens. Please don't allow any more of that crap.
Any additional public comments? Seeing no additional public comment? Oh, sorry about that.
As I'm here today, I'm, I, I know we had two folks that were sworn in, um, and I was listening to what they had to repeat from their significant others, or from their kid, and said, it said, "When elected officials are sworn in, they take an oath of, of office to support, protect, and defend the charter of Southwest Ranches, as well as to protect the rural residential character of our town." So I'm also starting to think, listening to Gary earlier, he says he works for the people here. He is their voice. And what I'm hearing is that many folks here don't want this commercial property. And I ask each of you, are you listening to the voice of the resident? Just ask yourself that. We also, as a town, had just voted on amendment, especially amendment number two. It was a two to one vote. What does that say? That we want to make sure the residents, 70% of us, that we protect any council member, or we protect actually any vote that's going to put, um, a land use in jeopardy other than rural. And, uh, I think the town has spoken, that 70% of the town has said that they don't want land use changes, unless it's absolutely vital. That's what a 5-0 vote stands for. So think about that and act as a voice for us.
Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is now closed. Back to the council. Anybody want to go first? No comment?
I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Um, we're talking about, the discussion item is the potential rezoning of the Flamingo Road corridor, correct? I'm not in, I'm not in support of that. 100% not in support of that. The residents have been talking about that. They are not in support of it. I'm, I'm there for them. It's not something I think we should consider. I'm not in support of it, and I can give you about 10, 15 reasons if you so desire. I can, it'll take a while for me to go through them.
Listen, I'm okay. I, I, listen, we just brought it out here for discussion. I don't know what the percentage would be of residents present, but it's clearly not the whole town. We have about 8,000 residents. We have about 5,730 registered voters. If I think my number's correct, Bob, you should know.
Close.
Okay. So, um, I would tell you that I've spoken and heard from a lot of people that heard about tractor supply, and I can't tell you that the absolute majority of the people that I spoke to wanted to know about, when's it coming, where's it going? I said, well, I don't think it's coming here. I, I think it's going to head to Davie, but guess what? The residents here aren't going to care because they're going to get a tractor supply close by. It's just not going to be here. So I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. You all don't want Flamingo or, or US 27, wherever. The issue here is, if we don't get additional revenue, either off land we already own or projects, I promise your taxes will continue to go up, only because it costs more, fire costs more, police costs more. I'm okay, but I, I don't want you all coming here and yelling at this council and saying, you know, you can't raise our tax, you can't raise our taxes, and you're going to say, well, where are we going to get the money from? So I just want everybody to realize that when it comes time, at tax time and budget time, that, that these things happen. Do we have other things we can do? We do have some other things we're working on. But until they happen, they're not here. So I just want to let you realize that I'm one vote. As you know, it takes five votes now to make things happen, but it's not just five votes just on those things. It's five votes, and if you want to come for a variance application, and you need five feet for your new, your new air conditioning pad, we have to all five agree to do that. So I, I just want you all to realize the 5-0 is, you know, is good in some ways and not good in others, but it is what it is, and I'm okay with it. Freddie, you got something or no? Dee?
Yeah, I, mine actually goes out to, uh, Mr. Brightcris, and I just want you to know, I do represent this area. And if, if the majority of the people in the town, like I tried to explain, just because it affects this area, doesn't mean it doesn't affect every place else, as you well know. There are 512 homes in Sunshine Ranches. Just so you get the facts straight, it was vetted, there's 512 homes. There are 1,007 properties. So out of 512 homes, how many of you are here from Sunshine Ranches? We do a percentage. Okay? What's the percentage? What's the percentage to sending one of these to the entire town? You can't make fish of one and follow the other. It doesn't work. You have to be honest upfront to everybody, not just one area. There's no agenda here. There isn't. I live in Sunshine Ranches. I've lived there for many, many years, and before that, Deems Ranch has been out here since the early 80s. So I also have seen the changes. Do you want to stop everything in your town? I mean, everything? Be careful of how you say that you want to stop everything. Think of the things that are, would be more conducive, softer for this town, that could work with you. And you know, the big issue years ago with Mr. Brightcris was traffic. He was going to stop it no matter what. Did we stop it? For the most part, I have to admit, they did a pretty good job. They beat their heads up and, and pounded on the pavement, and, and they did a pretty good job of getting a check on it. But then go down 188th, what is that like? And that church? If I could go there right now and leave this meeting and put a barricade and make them go out the back door or whatever and not come through our town or impact any one of you sitting here from Country Estates, believe me, we'd all be there laying on the ground stopping it. We wouldn't allow it. Do we want a Starbucks and a Burger King? Councilmember Hartman just said, why would I want that in my town? When I can go right across the street to where? When I can go right across the street to Weston and get it? Why do I want this in my town when I can go right across the street and get it?" They're not gonna stop coming here. They're not. Because of what we have. But that piece of property, and this is all I'm gonna say about it, that piece of property, if there's only a one way in and a one way out, and we know of our one way in and our one way out, it's worked for matters. If they can't get into our town, why are they gonna go out, go around the block and come into the town? That makes no sense at all. But the bottom line is, you have to consider everyone and not just your area. That's having an agenda. What if a hundred people, what if a hundred people two blocks over wanted it? Well, it's something to consider. Maybe we should put something in the newsletter because right now, I can tell you, we could stop this whole conversation. It is done. He controls it right now. He has full control of what you do and how you do it. No. Done. He said no. So you don't need to come to any more meetings or discuss it. It's done. It's, it's over. You're just beating something up for no reason at all. But it'll be like that for everything. And I'll give Andy credit, he brings us all in one at a time, talks to us, tries to explain things. Is, is Phil really out of order? I mean, I, I don't want to keep talking over Phil. Okay? So, um, if it's voted no, there's no more point in discussion. Vice Mayor Jablonsky has already expressed his opinion. No. So it's done. It's over. That's it. There's no more reason to talk about it. Thank you.
So you don't have to worry about it for the next four years?
I'd like to jump in, Doug.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So when you're running for office, you read everything you can to find the information that helps support your case in various, various arguments. And, you know, I didn't write the charter, but it has very specific language about rural residential lifestyle. I've been on the comp plan board for a long time, eight, nine years. The first part of the comp plan says, it has very specific language, unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but it has very specific language about a rural residential lifestyle. That's our two documents that guide how our town operates. Both of them have specific callouts. You heard Gary and I do our oath of office tonight, specifically called out in there is rural residential. Okay? That's three places we go. Now, I think this people spoke pretty loudly in this last election. Both of the charter amendments, both of them were about open space and rural lifestyle. And I think the people of our town, not the people of Country Estates where I live, not the people in Rolling Oaks where Gary lives, not the people of Sunshine Ranches where Dee lives, the whole town, it, it was not exactly a hundred vote difference on the two of these. They were two to one each. So I think the people have spoken about keeping our town rural. In my mind, if the people in Sunshine Ranches who live, who would be impacted by this very significantly, don't want it in their backyard, maybe there's another place in our town where it can go. But I, I'm with our residents when they say they want something or they don't want something because our town wants to stay rural. Our town wants us to protect our lifestyle. So I'll support our neighbors. I don't think we should have a commercial corridor on Flamingo Road. Thank you.
What I'll add to that is let you know, let, let me just say one thing to that. We have no control over our neighbors in Pembroke Pines or Cooper City, or Davie for that matter. They get to do what they want with the properties that they oversee, and we have no say. So just like that ball field you see coming in and stuff, yeah, it was beautiful for a long time and nice and green, and we were looking at it, and then it got developed. And it wasn't us. So I just want you to realize that, you know, ultimately Shop Memorial will probably see a better opportunity, and, uh, that'll get sold off and get some kind of development done to it. Not in our town, but it's still gonna affect us, and we're gonna get nothing from it. So I want you to realize that surrounding us in the communities is the other cities, that they're gonna be able to do what they want, and they can make it commercial or do whatever they want. It buffers us, it surrounds us, it's next to us. We get zero benefit. So I just want everybody to realize that.
Hey, Doug, I want to jump in on that comment. You're right, we don't have a say, we don't live there. But you as, you as the mayor have influence. We as the council have influ- influence. I remember, what was it, last month, you went to Davie when you didn't agree with something that you wanted to voice your opinion. We need to reach out more to the communities around us. We've got good relationships with Cooper City. We can improve it. And if we hear something coming up, and I, I know the park is way too far down, but I don't know why we couldn't have asked them to put up some, uh, screening shrubbery or whatever they could do to lessen the impact on our residents. So I don't agree. I mean, Pines, we've had a horrible relationship, but Tom Good was here tonight. I know he's willing to work. You were at his, an argu- both of you were at his, uh, his, uh, the night he was sworn in. So to me, we ought to leverage those instead of saying, "We don't have anything to say." We do. We do, we just have to use our bully pulpit.
We don't usually know about it, they haven't contacted us or told us, and usually by the time we hear about it, it's usually too late. So I'm not saying you're not wrong on that.
A lot of, uh, a lot, I'm sorry, Dee, jump in, please.
I, I think, you know, everybody knows it's pretty much Pembroke Pines that is always doing that to us. But when they buy property in our town, they still have certain rules they have to abide by. Correct?
But a lot of cities, a lot of towns have a government relations group. And if, if we don't want to start designating people in the administration to be government relations, we need to take that on ourselves. We need to attend some of these meetings. We need to ask Andy to make sure that somebody in our town is monitoring their agendas. And I'm only talking about our three neighbors. The rest of them, you know what? If it's happening down in Miramar, probably doesn't impact us.
I vote, you go to Pembroke Pines. I don't want to do it.
I'll go. I need to shake the mayor's hand anyway.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah. I don't know if you know where I live, but I live right on the borderline of, of Davie. And here.
Pembroke Pines.
Pembroke Pines. And let me tell you something, they don't care about us. They have a ballpark over there, people, they have lights on that thing, sometimes till midnight. They do things over there and they don't care about us. If you're thinking, they, they think about us, you're, you're living in a crazy world.
Yeah, we got a long way to go with them. But I think we've got a much better relationship with Davie and with, uh, Cooper City.
Yeah, I, I can jump in. Yeah, I, I concur, Bob. Uh, you know, maybe we need to be a little more proactive. Maybe we need to be a little more proactive in, in some of our inner city relations. Um, just want to make a, a few points, uh, why, why I'm not in support of commercializing Flamingo Road. Um, people may not realize this, there's a lot of churches on that road. Churches can be sold. It's just a question if the use and the property become valuable in it. The building we're in, hello? You know, um, I don't think there's, uh, we're gonna get, we would get enough tax revenue to warrant destroying a neighborhood. I just don't see it. You know, we became a town to stop this from happening from our adjacent cities, you know? We're starting to have, uh, you know, fighting all amongst ourselves now. The recent, uh, amendments, they were overwhelming. They were put on, they were put on that ballot for a reason. We're here. You know, to me, this is a real test of preserving the lifestyle we enjoy. When we formed our town, and I just took an oath in office to protect it, and I take that pretty seriously. And I don't control the dais. I'm one vote. Just like you're one vote, you're one vote, you're one vote, and he's one vote. We all have that authority when something comes down the line that we don't agree with. We all have that authority. I am not in control of this council. So I need everybody to understand that, and, and, and I think, I take the oath that I just took a couple hours ago very seriously. Residents that would be affected by this, they, they showed us last week at the election, at, at the polls, they showed us at the HOA meetings, they are not in favor of this. And I believe they understand that there's a downside to that, that you pointed out earlier, Doug. You know, I did a quick study not too long ago, about six months ago, I think it was, maybe closer to nine months ago, uh, that showed, and I used Cocina Plaza versus the last thirteen permits that we had for homes, and it showed a $245 difference in tax revenue between the commercial per acre, between commercial and residential. So the homes that are being built now are pretty substantial, and they are contributing, uh, probably more than their fair share of the town, uh, with the real estate market the way it is. You know, after looking at it, and, you know, this election brought up some, uh, facts, you know, like, um, tom thum, how much they contribute to the town, and they're probably the busiest thing we have in town next to the McDonald's drive thru. Um, we would need dozens of tom thums and half a dozen Cocina Plazas to have an impact that would substantially decrease our taxes amongst, amongst our residents. I mean, it would be to, I don't think there's enough land out there that we could dedicate to that, to where it would have a marginal, uh, where it would warrant destroying neighborhoods, one on top of another. I just don't see it. I don't see it at all. You know, there's, there's a, you, you don't want to push the dominoes over because then they start going and it just never stops. You know, our tax base is stable right now. You know, all of us voted to raise our taxes at our last budget, and we all recognize that there's gonna be some trade-offs in the future. And I'm confident we're gonna manage them as we go along. Huh?
No.
You didn't vote to raise the taxes?
No, I didn't.
Did you vote to increase the fire fee? Yes or no?
Yes.
Did you vote to increase solid waste? Yes or no?
Those are contracts.
I asked you a question.
Where are you going with it? But where are you going with that?
You voted to raise taxes. You didn't vote on to increase the millage, that was it.
I didn't vote for that, no, I didn't.
You voted to increase solid waste, it was a 5-0.
Did we have a choice?
You always have a choice. Whether or not it flies is another story. Point I'm trying to make is that we all, we all recognize that we needed to raise taxes, and we all voted accordingly.
Yeah, but you're kinda, you know, misleading that, you know? We didn't, uh, we got a break.
I'm not misleading anybody, I'm quoting fast.
Kinda got a break with that for quite a while, and then when the new contracts went out, I believe that, you know...
I'm only record, I'm only talking about the vote that just occurred. That's all I'm saying. We all voted to rate, to increase taxes. It's on your tax bill. May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Changes along Griffin Road, I don't think would generate enough revenue versus homes to warrant destroying that area. I'm with the residents always, and will always support them. I don't believe that a change to commercial is, is in benefit to our town any way, shape, or form. It's not worth it. We want the, we want the residential rural lifestyle, and this is how we achieve it, and this is how we keep it. I'm done.
I'd, I'd like to chime in on something a little bit different, and if I got out of order, I apologize for that. The gentleman in the back, you talked about purchasing a home and what it cost you, and if your kids do it, it's going to be reassessed at new values? Well, you need to call the property appraiser because there is a loophole, and there's ways of getting around that. If one of your kids is on the deed, they keep the same base. Now, this has been going on in the town for a long time, since even before Martin Carr. So people do know. So there's also revenue loss there. It's, it's a lot. You know, if you're paying $7,000 a year, and now you acquire a home, uh, your child acquires your home, and you don't think to do this, now this house is reappraised, and it's, you're right, they can't afford it. There's no way for them to go from $7,000 to $20,000 or $30,000 a year.
All right. We can't do that, I'm sorry. Gotta cut you off.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Number fifteen, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is for all three sets?
All three.
And?
Yes.
All three sets. Any correction to our minutes? They've been corrected before. Seeing no corrections, back to the council. Any changes? Seeing none, call a question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
This is Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
I agree.